Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, December 3, 2025. Roll call, please.
Yes. Campbell.
Present.
Morgan.
Here.
Nordentoff. Pfaff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ware.
Here.
Sula.
Present. We are all here. If everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment. This is intended for an opportunity to speak about things that are on the agenda but not the public hearing matters. So if anybody has any comments, if you'd come to the center of the room. There being none, I'll close the floor to the public.
Yep. So the first item on the agenda tonight is two minor modifications to the planned unit development for 10 hotel and residences.
We have just a minute?
Okay, yes, sorry. Items four, five, and six, we are pulling from the agenda tonight. We have a little bit of work to do on those minutes, so those will be pulled back till our next regularly scheduled meeting. Now we'll go on to the minor modification to the planned unit development. As I said, 10 hotel and residences, Kayat Enterprises is requesting two minor amendments to the planned unit development agreement. The planned unit development agreement was approved by the village board on March 17th of this year, granting permission for 80 residential units to be constructed out of the existing Holiday Inn, former Holiday Inn Hotel. As part of the development process, they presented a parking plan. Part of the parking plan included a map showing and some discussion showing that the residential parking was going to be segregated from the remainder of the parking on the site by a fence and gate system. As the Kayats have gotten into the development and redevelopment of this property, they feel that that fence is no longer necessary. They are asking for removal of the requirement for the fence to be segregating the parking. From a staff perspective, it will allow for better flow around the site, also gaining a couple of parking spots where the fence, where the points between the residential parking and the hotel parking. The second request that they have is a modification to the sign that was granted as part of the planned unit development. As a reminder, the sign had a digital message board component that was typically under a special use permit approval, but it was incorporated as part of the planned unit development process. As part of that development, part of that approval, they also were granted a minor sign exception sign height allowance. Code for this site would be 12 feet. They were granted a 13 foot, nine inch allowance as part of the PUD agreement, based upon some of the renaming of their restaurant offerings within the development and the addition of an additional restaurant name. They are requesting a little bit of an increase to that sign height, going from 13 feet, nine to 15 feet. Since both of these were included as part of the planned unit development agreement, it was appropriate to request a minor modification to these two elements. They are before you tonight. As a reminder, the Planning and Zoning Board has final approval on these two items.
Dave, turn the floor over to...
Yes, good evening. My name is Matt Majewski from North Shore Sign, here representing the 10 Hotel. Like he said, there would be two minor modifications. We will be increasing the height to 15 feet overall. Originally was 13.9. The reason for this is we are going to be adding a Lemoncello Cafe display on the sign. That will be seven inches tall, which will meet the minimum of six inch height requirement. The electronic message unit on the sign will not change at all. That will be the same size. The only thing that will change is the overall height, just to incorporate the Lemoncello Cafe name for a permanent spot.
Any questions or comments?
Just one quick question on the parking. Parking adds additional parking for the residents or for the general public for the hotel?
So the parking for the residents, the quantity of parking spots will remain the same. I believe it was 120 parking spots. They're required at one and a half per residential unit, 80 units equating to 120 parking spots. It's just the delineation, the segregation of the residential parking to the hotel parking will be done with signage and pavement markings instead of a physical barrier of a fence.
Got it. So they're still going to have dedicated spaces?
Yes.
Requesting a change in how they manage those spaces.
Correct.
But what is to guarantee that someone doesn't take their spot?
That will be up to 10 Hotel and Residences to manage that, making sure that there's adequate signage, you know, as it would be for any reserved parking spot for any business or any residents in town. If somebody parks in your spot, you technically have the right to tow. Hopefully, they will be able to manage that with hotel-registered guests, having, you know, known license plate numbers, should be able to contact the resident or the guest in the hotel room and have them move those cars before they get to the towing issues. But that is up to them to manage it. If you remember, they did have a substantial valet and off-site parking contingent as part of the development proposal, so that would be imperative for them to work that in with all the other aspects of it.
So it's up to them to manage their tenants' concerns?
Yes.
Just a comment, a quick comment. I think aesthetically, it would look better without the fence.
Without the what?
Without the fence.
Yes, I agree. I agree.
If there's no other questions, motions would be in order. I suggest we make it two separate motions. I don't think it's going to make a difference, but just in case, because they're not contingent upon each other.
Correct.
Go ahead, Dave.
I move that we approve a minor amendment to the planned unit development for 10 hotel and residences to remove, allow the removal of the access control fencing for the residential units being replaced with parking lot signage and pavement markings as justified.
Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Second, that was you, Todd. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Now, we need a motion on the request for the height to the monument sign.
I'll take that as well. I move that we approve the proposed minor amendment to the planned unit development for 10 hotel and residences to allow the height of the freestanding monument sign to be increased from 13.75 to 15 feet.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Pfaff, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. So as you heard, as you heard, we had approval authority for this one, so the next step would just be whatever building permit is required for the sign.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing special use permit request for a two-pole sign to be located at 5250 Grand Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rick Strusner, the architect of the original Pembroke Corners sign, as well as the architect developer of Pembroke Corners, on behalf of Pembroke Corners LLC, request a special use permit regarding the Pembroke Corners multi-panel freestanding sign for relief from the zoning ordinance requirement that all freestanding signs must be monument signs. Furthermore, Mr. Strusner is requesting a minor sign exception to increase the proposed sign's height from 12 feet to 18 feet, and to increase the number of tenant panels from four to eight per sign face. The Pembroke Corner sign is located within the C1 Neighborhood Commercial hood district. And Mr. Strusner is here now.
Okay, as this item is a public hearing, I would request anyone from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to give testimony or ask questions to please stand and be sworn in. If the presenter could just raise your right hand, and anyone else. Tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. At this time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner, and you can please state your name for the record.
Rick Strusner. First, I'd like to thank Shannon for her guidance through this process. She was terrific, and she was patient with the variations that we went, went through to get to this point. I'd like to give you a little history to this sign, if I may, that, you know, the sign was maybe 40 years old, maybe a little more than 40 years old, but that I received a phone call maybe nine months ago or so from the property manager that the top triangle of the sign was hanging over the sign. And I immediately probably made the mistake of saying, then get somebody out there immediately and remove it, because that's dangerous. And while they were out there removing it, they said, Rick, that really all the timbers are not in great shape. And I, so I, my second mistake, which was really the more costly mistake, is I said, remove all of it, and we'll just build the same sign over again. It never dawned on me, and I've been doing this for 50 years, so it should have dawned on me that, that the ordinance would be different than what I built at that time. So I...
Do you, do you have a picture? Yes, we do.
I know that it's considerably more than, than what is now permitted. But what I wanted to ask is sometimes in certain villages, and maybe here too, that we're going to rebuild that sign, the one being requested now, or a bigger one, on the existing foundation. And if we were allowed to do it the way it was, it actually, other than being brand-new timbers, would be exactly what was there. And I apologize for the mistake of taking it all down, or maybe I should apologize to myself for taking it all down, not knowing that I wouldn't be grandfathered anymore, because I didn't even think about being grandfathered. I just thought that I could put back what was there. So I wanted my two seconds to give you that story. I would, I would really appreciate if we could put back what was there. If not, I certainly, I'm a guest in your village, and I'll abide by your decision, and I'd appreciate then the sign the way it was presented for the 18 feet. Thanks.
Well, and Mr. Strusner, we have the pictures.
Oh.
We have the pictures of the sign right here on the wall.
With our, when we built the center, there was, there was almost no retail west of 294. And we had a giant neighbor of, what was the amusement park, Great America, across the way with their signage and their stuff. And so that was approved at that time. And for our small tenants, it's very good exposure for them. So I know I might be out of order, that that was not what Shannon read to you just now about what you're here for or what you've read, but I thought I had this one chance of at least asking, again, with a little bit of hope, that because we're going to put it back, we would put it back identical and on its existing foundation. In other words, we're, we're not changing the design, we're not putting in a new foundation. We, we would put it back exactly the way it was presented. And if not, then we're asking, obviously, this set of drawings right here, which doesn't allow us to give each tenant a sign face on each side, but I'm in your hands. I had my two seconds that I, my two minutes that I wanted to at least express my feelings. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Who'd like to start?
I will.
Okay.
Okay, evening. I just have a few questions. The contractor that you used to take down the triangle port portion of the sign, because you said it was hanging down, was that a licensed contractor?
Well, I'm sure he is.
Well, how come he didn't know about permits? How come he didn't know about permits?
If it's...
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir. You need to stay by the microphone. Thank you.
It's a company called MAG, M-A-G Construction. They work throughout the whole northern suburbs here. They're extremely qualified. And if I would have said, don't touch it, we need to go for permits, that is the air I made.
And then as you decided to take the other portion of the sign down, and nobody mentioned anything about permits, or did he and you tell them you didn't need a permit? What was it?
I did not tell them they didn't need a permit, but it just, I want, you know, once I heard that it's, that the timbers were soft and dangerous, I immediately reacted, and maybe I was distracted by other things in, in my business life at that moment. I said, just take it all down. So...
Because I went by it and I looked at it.
I have to say, I didn't envision that it couldn't all go back up, but...
So you knew you'd have to have a new sign?
Hmm?
You knew you would have to have a new sign?
Yes.
Because I went by it and I looked at it, and it looks like it was taken down with a hacksaw. Not a very good job of demolition if you plan to use the base again.
Oh, no, we definitely, from, from the moment it was done, I talked to the contractor about that we would, that I, without knowing the zoning ordinance, that we would rebuild it exactly the way it was there, that we shouldn't leave, you know, we just felt it was a danger to leave any of it standing.
It's kind of a danger to the way it is right now. I told you, I drove past it and stood in front of it. It was a very poor job taking it down.
May I interject? Actually, I was the one who noticed that they were taking the signs down. I went to Jimmy John's for lunch, and the sign was, it wasn't what it's looking like now, but I asked them to stop because there was no permit. And then the young gentleman stated, you know, could they at least take it down to what you see now, because they were afraid that if they kept it the way it was, it would, the one side, because the middle part was taken out, that it would fall over. So that's the reason why it looks like that. They weren't trying to do it like that. It was just, I had them stop, and they were like, well, let us at least finish this one side. And so they stopped it like that.
Okay.
And if I could just interject here for a second, could, could we please focus on the, the sign request before us? Enforcement is not our purview. So let's, let's focus on the request that's...
And the, the increase in height that you're looking for, is it going to accommodate everything your tenants need?
No, the, the increase of height, it gives us eight. We have about 15 tenants in the center, so I'll put some on one side and some on the other. That's, you know, that's why I would like to put back the sign as it originally was.
Okay, thank you.
So to just clarify, the sign was originally 30 feet, and now the sign has to be 12 feet, so he's asking for an additional six feet, so that they can do the panels.
Well, I'm...
30 feet tall?
Yes.
The one that you're showing right there?
Yes.
This is, the one that they're showing is the original sign. This is the proposed sign.
Yeah, but Shannon, if I could interrupt, what I, what I'm, what I'm taking, I know I'm out of order, that I'm, I'm asking for something that's not, was not presented to the board. I'm asking, what would it be, would there be any harm, or could I be allowed to put back the sign at the old height and with the number of spaces on it? And I know that that's, that's out of order. I've been doing this for 50 years, but I, and I've been at this microphone many times in this village and others. So it's a series of mistakes that took place from a standpoint of me being wherever I was in the world at the moment, saying it's dangerous, take it down, get rid of it. That was the only thing I was thinking at the moment. I wasn't thinking permits, I wasn't thinking zoning. I was giving instructions that I would pay for to be taken down and removed. And it was only later on that I learned then, wait a second, and when, like Shannon said, when she noticed it out there, what's going on here? She didn't remember a permit coming in. And so that's when my staff worked with Shannon for that solution that you see up on the wall. We would live with that solution. I mean, I, you know, I, like I say, for 50 years, I've been telling villages, I'm a guest in your village, and I go by your rules. So I, I don't have a problem. I just thought this was my only opportunity to say, could I push the button a little further and replace the sign? And, and the thought I had today was, in some villages, even, you know, when houses come down, if they save one wall or they save the foundation, then they build on it again. So while, today, I actually thought, we are saving the foundation, even that sign's being put back on that foundation, but would that be enough of a reason to allow us to put back the old sign?
Okay, let me just, yeah, let me just say something for perspective here. We were at 30, code is 12, right? And they're asking for 18. So that, that's one issue, is the overall height. The other issue that we need to be considering is whether or not to allow pole sign versus monument sign. Is that, that's...
Right.
Those are the key things that were enacted the last time we amended the, the sign ordinance.
As well as the number of tenant panels.
And the number of tenant panels.
So the 12 to 18 is a minor amendment in our zoning code. The four tenant panels to the eight tenant panels is a minor amendment in our zoning code. The fact that it's not a monument sign is a special use permit. If we were to entertain the concept of going back up to the 30 feet, that would be a separate special use permit. If we were to entertain the concept of going from the eight tenant panels back up to the 15 or 16 that were on there, that would be a separate special use permit. So...
And if we went with a monument sign at 18 feet, that would be considered minor?
That would be a, a minor amendment to the sign code. Yes.
We would have authority on that?
Yes.
Okay. So just, you know, the logistics on the table there. Okay.
And as far as the, the non-conforming element, as soon as they affect the structure of the sign, which is any of the, I would consider any of the posts holding up the sign faces, as soon as the structure of the sign is touched, at that point, the non-conforming status goes away. The legal non-conforming status goes away. The grandfather goes away.
Right. Brian, was there anything else that you had?
Yeah, I was just, I think you covered it. In terms of the history, you know, I suppose that's helpful, we're considering the, the minor amendment, you know, to go to 18, that, you know, there's an understanding that, as to why that request is being made.
Why don't I, I'm not a good poker player. Why don't I, I wanted to tell the story. Why don't I withdraw that request, and let's talk about what was presented to you? I really, I, I just told myself I couldn't come tonight without telling the story, but I want to abide by the rules that...
Well, and it does support the request for the minor amendment, to the extent that, you know...
Let's make life easier for...
But the only way the special use goes away entirely...
Is the architecture of the little center there. And so that's, I want to repeat the flavor in the field that was there, even though this would be much lower.
But the only thing that keeps us totally within a, a minor amendment is if you abandon the pole sign concept and go to a monument sign.
Yeah, but he's not doing that.
No, 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 no.
Okay.
So I just want to be clear that if, if your intent is to continue with the pole concept, we still have to follow the special use procedure guidelines.
Right.
Okay. All right, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah. So on that topic, you know, I think one of the important elements that was mentioned in the commentary that we are reading here about the standards, does touch on the architectural part of it. And I think that that's something that I, I wanted to make sure that we all discussed, you know. So what he's proposing is to, in a sense, maintain the same architectural integrity of the original sign, which was a pole sign. And so it completely blows up this whole thing architecturally and its tie-in with the building architecture and so forth. And so, so I think there is some compelling reason, you know, to go ahead from that standpoint and support it. And I think the, the request at 18, at 18 feet, I think also does still fall in line with many other requests we've had to try to accommodate multi-tenant, you know, locations. Okay? Would we love, you know, 12 feet and love four panels? And yeah, of course we would, but we've had other instances before us in the past where we've had to make these considerations based on the size of the complex, the number of tenants, and try to find a common ground that works, again, with the spirit that, that we have within the, within the new ordinance, but also maintaining some reasonable, you know, compromise, middle ground for those that have these circumstances, again, architecturally and due to the number of tenants. So I don't think that what is being requested is unreasonable. And I think we actually gain, we get a new sign that's in better condition and about 10 to 12 feet lower than what we had before. So that's my comment.
I somewhat agree, but the problem I have is it's almost like we're rewarding somebody for not pulling a permit, permit. Because if somebody else decides to take down a sign and just not draw a permit, they can claim ignorance also.
Let me comment on that real quick. Removal of the sign would not have triggered a permit except for, removal of the top portion of the sign would not have triggered a permit. Once they got into removal of the entire sign, they got into some of the electrical, that would probably be the only part of the removal that would have triggered a permit, just to make sure that the electrical disconnections were all safe. So the repairs, the modification that he was doing originally with the top section, most likely would not, we would not have required a permit for that. If they were just going to repair that top section, may have, that may have triggered a permit, but the, if it's a non-electrical sign, someone wants to take it down, typically something of that size and scale, we would not trigger a permit. Really nothing for us to look at at that.
Okay. Got it. We have other signs in the Grand Avenue that are 18?
The Roerman's sign is 18 feet.
Okay.
The 10 Hotel is now 15, will be 15 feet. So we have some that are, and I know the Roerman was 18, I think the Menard's sign is 18. The Gurnee Mills ones are probably, and that's, they're short but wide. Jail Station exceeds, because that was predated, that one's probably close to the 30 feet.
Okay. What about the hotels near Timothy Hotel?
Those, I believe, exceed as well. They predate the current zoning code.
Honda dealership?
Those, testing my memory here, I think they're probably in the 15-foot range. They may be up to 18 feet.
Okay.
So within that, the 12 to 18 scale, yeah.
All right. 18's not reasonable.
18 is not.
Scheme of things, okay.
That's why we left it as a minor amendment.
Tad?
Kane? I'm fine, I mean, it's coming down 11 feet, I get it. I drove the strip today as well and I think between 21 Milwaukee and Dilly's there, this is kind of consistent, I think, with what the time period was with regards to the height of sign in and around that era. So I'm okay with it coming down and the panels.
Yeah, I'm okay with the height. I'm a little hung up on pole sign versus monument. We've tried to have been, we've tried to be really consistent in terms of moving to monument signs. I mean, to the extent that even if you look back recently, we did the American Legion sign, or put up a pole sign, but they constructed in a manner that it resembles a monument sign. So I'm, I'm just a little bit concerned.
I think, I think the intent of the architectural style, right? The sign being consistent with the architecture of the, of the subject strip, I think, is a little bit of the difference here.
Okay. As long as we have a rationale.
If they were to drop that sign down to the ground, would that be a monument sign?
A monument sign is defined as, you know, the base of the sign has to be 80% of the width of the sign face. So yes, if it were to be dropped all the way down to the ground, then you'd have solid sign all the way down to the ground, then yes, that would be classified as a monument sign.
Okay.
Wondering.
And again, you know, those businesses that are going to be on there are set back from the roadway quite a bit as well. You know, typically the monument signs, you know, the structures are in the line of sight of the sign. Closer, you know, closer to the roadway.
Yeah, but if we still had the 18 feet. I mean, it comes down to what's holding up the guts of this.
Yeah. I mean, all those, all those businesses have signs on them.
It's not, but some of them, because it's an L-shaped building, so some of them are just facing.
Facing the wrong direction.
Yeah, these go back further. I mean, there are, there are some that are in the front, but this is a deeper lot.
Okay. All right. As this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the floor to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this particular topic? There being none, I'll close the floor to the public. If motion of recommendation to the village board would be in order?
Are you looking at them as one or three separate?
We'll do the special use permit as a separate one and then the two minor exceptions can be together if the motioner pleases.
So we need one for sure for the special use and then the other ones we can separate?
You want to separate it together, the other two?
The issue is.
I think two separate, the special use should be a separate motion.
Right.
And then the minor amendments should be a separate motion. It can entail, it can include both.
Both the number of signs, yeah. Both the number of signs and, or number of panels and the height.
Deviation, right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Approve, recommend a motion to approve the petition and recommend the village board to approve the special use permit to allow a two-pole pylon freestanding sign.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Tad, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Aye.
Morgan.
Yes.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. We need a.
Recommend a motion, approve the petition and.
Just, just a second.
This one will be for final approval.
This will be for an approval, not a recommendation of the board. I just wanted to clarify that.
Recommend to approve the petition of a 50% increase in the 12-foot maximum sign height for a total sign height of 18 feet. And increasing the number of tenant panels from four to a total number of eight tenant panels per sign face on property located at 5250 Grand Avenue.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pamp, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell.
Aye.
Morgan.
Aye.
Nordentoff.
Aye.
Pfaff.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Sula.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much and.
Okay. Thank you.
It's good to have you around. Okay, next item on the agenda is a remanded public hearing for a special use permit request for a car wash supposed to be located at 7340 Grand Avenue.
Shannon, again.
The village board remanded the petition for Dream Clean Car Wash at its November 17, 2025 meeting and determined that the additional information submitted warranted a second review from the planning and zoning board. The additional documents include a traffic summary memo from KLOA and an enhanced site plan showing where vehicles will queue if, when vehicle demand exceeds the required stacking area.
Thank you. As this is a public, public hearing, I would request anybody from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to give testimony or ask questions, please stand and be sworn in. Please raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you, you may be seated. Thank you. As this is a remanded public hearing, protocol allows us to incorporate by reference things that were presented to the planning and zoning board back in October, but not what was presented to the village board. So you can focus on highlighting changes to what you presented to this body previously.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to come back. As Shannon indicated, we appeared before village board back on November 17. At a time we sought to address the most, what we thought the most salient points based on our appearance before your last time, which was relating to some traffic issues, site surrounding, and then the concept related to the queuing and what would happen at those times when it was very busy. What I'd like to do at this time is jump forward in the PowerPoint that we have. I have with us this evening, who we had last time before, Tim Hague. Tim is the overall developer of the project. Since the time of our last appearance and as we identified before the village board, Tim has had discussions with adjoining owners and residents. And as indicated, there are about four or five points that he has sought to address as a developer off-site to our piece. What I'd like to do is have Tim address you on those points. He can run through those, then we can come back and address those specifically related to the operation of Dream Clean and onsite matters. So I'm going to let Tim discuss those issues.
Thanks, Rick. Tim Hague, Keystone Ventures and Gurnee Retail Partners. Thanks for letting us reappear and appreciate your time. As mentioned, when we were here in October, we had some comments and concerns voiced by the adjoining residential neighbors. And since that meeting, we've had the opportunity to meet with them. I thank the neighbors for their time, walking me through their properties and opening their doors to us to go out to the properties and see the issues firsthand, get a full understanding of their concerns and see if we can come up with some solutions. So through those conversations, I guess what I'd like to do is just highlight the, the five listed concerns that we heard consistently at the October meeting and then let you know what proposed solutions we discussed with the neighbors. And we summarized all this in an email to the neighbors and we've also shared that email with village staff prior to this meeting. So with that, one of the comments we heard was the need for additional screening along the northern boundary of the commercial property. That is the southern property lot line of the residential neighbors to screen their homes and backyards and provide a more continuous visual screen between the residential and commercial properties. And then also in part block the vehicular headlights from shining into the residential properties. So the discussion that we've had is to augment the existing new landscaping that we planted along the northern boundary of the commercial with a combination of additional spruce trees, Norwood and Black Hill spruce trees, that would be planted at a height of eight to 10 feet upon the initial planting and planted 10 feet apart on center. And combined with some Mission Arborvitae trees, again planted at eight to 10 feet in height, planted at a distance of five feet on center. The planting distances is what's recommended by our landscape architect, Wendy Schellenberg with Dan Weinbach and Partners, that did the landscape plan for the development. The particular mix of spruce trees and Arborvitae trees would be done and selected in consultation with each neighbor and then let them have input directing the locations that these trees would be planted. The growth expectations of these trees would be to, would be a foot to a foot and a half per year. I'd also like to just identify, this is in addition to the existing conditions. And I think part of the issue and part of the concern that the neighbors have voiced is when we, when we constructed the initial portions of the center, some of the common improvements were this, were the internal access drives, the east-west access drive that we'll talk about in a second, that goes from Bridalwood on the east over to Woodland Terrace on the northwest portion of the site. And then the right-in, right-out access off of Grand Avenue in the center of the site. That's the north-south portion of that. We took some, we had some conversations with village staff when we first came in and talked about this development. We acquired the property with a commercial zoning that came about shortly, I think, David, it was 2004?
2003.
2003, thank you. And so the property's already been, has always been zoned commercial since then. We came in and village staff gave us some direction of expanding the setback buffer requirement from the residential properties from 20 feet to 30 feet. We understood that and agreed to that and did that. In addition to that, they discussed creating a berm within that setback that averages about four feet. It's a little higher on the west side, adjacent to the utility building. There is a portion that goes below four feet for drainage reasons, but we agreed to that. We planted, it was discussed and suggested, which we did, planting a continuous row of hedge bushes on top of that. And these bushes got planted at about 36 inches. They will grow to be six to 10 feet in height. The specific species is a cotton eastern shrub. We planted 209 of these shrubs, which exceeded the code. But again, as it's viewed, at this point in time, they were just planted in the middle of summer, so they haven't grown much and they haven't reached that maturity level. Thus, in some of the conversations with the neighbor, neighbors was adding the additional tree plantings that are hardy trees that remain green and dense 12 months out of the year to augment that future screen. We were also discussed with village staff and took the direction of concentrating the new trees, the new shade trees that we planted along the northern boundary. So we would add to that buffering and screening along the residential. This area, in this area, we planted 43 shade trees. Again, they, they range from three to five inches in calibers when they're planted. So they're young trees, they're not very mature. And I think that's what, what contributed to the concern that we heard from the neighbors on this. So we're, we're willing to come back and add to that planning on the north side of the berm, between the north side of the berm and the residential lot lines and work with the neighbors to plant their preference between the evergreen trees and the spruce trees. Another concern we heard was the conflict of the vehicular headlights projecting onto the residential house at 36147 Banbury Court. This home is actually on the west side of Woodland Terrace. Shannon, I don't know if we could pull up the overall site plan where the east-west access drive gets to its westernmost point. I don't know if we have a site plan of the overall development.
Oh, you're talking.
This is the, this is the point where the, where our new east-west access drive reaches Woodland Terrace and this is the home that then is on the west side of Woodland Terrace. So.
Ms. Ray.
One, a couple more. It's a site plan, the overall development. Think it was submitted separately from the PowerPoint.
Oh, all I have is what was given for the.
Okay, well, I'll just describe it verbally. So has noted, when that east-west drive reaches its western terminus point and meets Woodland Terrace, this is the home that would be directly on the west side of that T-intersection. The issue was, is has those cars exit onto Woodland Terrace? Those headlights face directly at this home. The home is set back a little from Woodland Terrace, the parkway distance. There's a few mature spruce trees that are very tall. And then there was an area in between the two mature spruce trees that the neighbor planted, a few new spruce trees, but these went in at about five feet in height. So they're not accomplishing the mission of blocking the headlights shining into his home. So what we discussed and would be willing to do is to replant his through, his three new spruce trees a little closer southeasterly toward the Woodland Terrace roadway and then come behind there in between those trees and then his existing fence and plant a row of 10-foot tall Arborvitae trees to give him a nice tall, continuous screen at that point. Another concern we heard was the east-west access drive creating cut-through traffic, a cut-through traffic path between Bridalwood and Woodland Terrace. What we propose to do here is to alter the pavement markings to continue the painted yellow median line for the full extent of the east-west drive. This will provide a visual narrowing effect to the drive, which typically will slow a driver's speed down because they feel there's a narrower path for them to stay within. We're also proposing to add two new stop signs at the midpoint of that east-west drive. Right now, there's only one stop sign so that when you come in off of Grand Avenue from the right-in, right-out and get to that northern point of the east-west drive, there's a stop sign. We would add a stop sign for the east and westbound traffic, creating a full, fully controlled intersection where those two meet. In addition to that, you know, we, we think that the convenience of that being a cut-through path for traffic right now, that convenience factor will go down a good measure when the other business is open just because there'll be more customer traffic interacting with that east-west drive. But we think by nature, then it becomes less convenient. What we're also willing to do is work with the traffic consultants, KLOA and village staff and revisit and monitor that after the other business is open. And if it's felt by the village of the need. And if it's felt by the village of the need to add a speed table into that intersection of the north, south and east-west drive, we're willing to commit to do that as well. Another comment we heard was a concern that some of our parking lot lights, some of the new lights that we put on the access drive and in the parking lot are projecting illumination upon the residential properties into their backyards and on the back of their houses and some of their windows. So what we're proposing here to is add appropriate screen extensions to all the parking lot and access drive lights to minimize and eliminate the illumination to the adjacent residential properties and then also block the direct visual sightlines to the actual light bulb source from the residential properties. The last concern that we heard was regarding traffic safety of the vehicles on this east-west drive. Again, right now, they're going a little fast. And there was a concern mentioned if someone were to lose control of their car there and go over the northern edge of the curb, over the berm and through the landscaping, they could arrive in the, in the backyards and create a safety issue. So what, what we're proposing the solution here is to construct this decorative wood guard rail that would extend from just east of our midpoint of the site where the north portion of the access drive meets the east-west access drive and then continue that through the curve western. It would be a total of about 200 and 225 feet, linear feet of this decorative wood guard rail to prohibit that from ever happening. So those were the, some of the discussions that we had with the neighbors. Hopefully, we'll hear some of their commentary after our meetings. And again, I thank the neighbors for their time for allowing us and welcoming, welcoming us to their properties to discuss this and appreciate your time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Shannon, if you want to go back to the start of the PowerPoint, and it's going to carry by the chairman, I want to just focus on, on things that are different than what we spoke the.
Thank you.
Than the first time. So continue on, I think, no, go down, I think maybe to the fourth slide, the slide that shows the site plan with the queuing. Right there. Right. So the, one of the, one of the issues kind of tied into traffic and also for the site was related to, in the event there is queuing larger than the queuing as provided for. Currently, there was queuing for, I believe it was for 33 cars, which met standards. And as you'll see on the slide, added in gold, kind of a gold color there, it shows for those times where queuing lengths are much greater than they are typically. I just want to point out, this will happen a probably possibly 10 to 12 times a year for a couple of hours on those days. It's really a time based on weather conditions, what's occurred just before that. And so additional, we showing though in the gold is where additional queuing may occur. So that occurs, additional cars on site coming back through to the entry lane, as you see the, there's a traffic lane coming on the screen to the right coming in, cars can queue up that way, does not queue onto any public streets, queues into the driveline there. We do not believe that at any point it would interfere with what's identified there as the banking parcel immediately to the right of our, of our site. In addition, and I think we spoke a little bit last time, that at the time where you may see queuing of this nature, employees will also go out, make sure that there's no interference either with the public or other sites located here. Also as identified, once queuing gets to a certain point, customers that are coming by generally aren't going to just come in. People say, hey, it's way too busy now, I'm going to come back later. And again, this only happens a couple of times per year. This also ties into a little bit on the, on the traffic side as to the traffic generated by this use versus other uses that would be allowed by right, not by special use. And we submitted as part of our packet, and you'll see a report from KLOA, you know, kind of discussing what type of traffic comes to this site and impacts or actually lack of any significantly more impact from this use as to others. I have with us this evening Javier Milan from KLOA, and if you'd like, he can certainly answer any questions they may have when we get to your portion, or if you'd like him now, to kind of address this use as related to other uses that are permitted by right. As you know, we're here asking, we need a special use in order to do the car wash, you know, and that's what also in part is triggering some of these off-site things that, that Tim is talking about, but for our special use, he wouldn't be brought into the picture because it wouldn't, it wouldn't be occurring, you know, and you'll hear from adjoining owners raising issues that to some respect are really just related to the fact that there's a commercial development here. We're very thankful that Tim has, is stepping up. And at the time we met before the village board, thought was that if the things that Tim is talking about are important to you, we can add those as conditions, which I think would help address issues related to, related to that. Those are really are the points that were really different. If you, if you have questions now that you have for Javier related to traffic, he's happy to, to answer those. But those really are the differences that we, that we had and what we sought to address since the time we were last before you. So with that, if you wish, I can have Javier come up and talk a little bit about the traffic report that he gave here, gave here, or if you have other questions, happy to answer those.
I think we should hear what the traffic consultant has to say. And before you start, sir, can you highlight, are there any changes to the traffic flow pattern that was presented to us last time?
First, first none.
I'm sorry, we related to, as onsite.
Are there any changes to the traffic pattern that was presented to us last time?
No, there are no changes to the traffic pattern, as I indicated on the site plan. Oh, we showed where additional stacking would be, that was one of the concerns that was, that was ready. I mean, the flow and the direction here really hasn't, hasn't changed, there's really not much we can really do about onsite.
Okay.
My name is Javier Milan. I'm a principal with KLOA Incorporated, 9575 West Higgins Road. And we conducted a summary traffic evaluation for the proposed development. I do have to say that we actually in 2024, we did the traffic study for the build-out of the Keystone Greenwich subdivision. And in the study, we assume under phase one, a fast food restaurant, which is in there right now, a 9,800 square foot tire shop and a 2,500 square foot drive-through coffee shop. It also assumed or included for phase two, a medical, a medical use. And, and the traffic study concluded that taking into account the proposed access as, as you see right now, that traffic can be accommodated. Now, having said that, the land, the land, the land uses have changed a little bit. Now you have a bank and you have a, a car wash. So we did a comparison between the trips that were generated by what was originally assumed versus what this will be generating. And based on that comparison, the proposed new plan will generate less traffic during the morning peak hour and less traffic during the Saturday midday peak hour and will generate slightly more during the PM peak hour. However, to that point, traffic on Grand Avenue, it's during the PM peak hour is about 15% lower than what it is during the Saturday. And what I mean by that is there's good synergy. While it generates a little bit more, there's less traffic during the PM than what it would be on Saturday. Along those lines, there was concerns about the car wash stacking and, thank you. And as you can see, the, the site in totality, including that gold, gold area that you've seen there are the gold cars, it can accommodate 46 vehicles. That is substantial stacking for a car wash facility. When would something like that happen? Potentially during those car wash peak day operations. And again, based on historical data, this typically happens after a heavy snowfall and then you have a great warm day and people want to get rid of the snow and the salt. And again, based on historical data, this is about 10 to 12 times a year. And when that happens, car washes commonly do these three things to actually ensure that traffic flows properly. First of all, they increase the service rate of the tunnel to its maximum that it can process, so they can process vehicles much faster. Second, they do provide staff at critical locations to help direct and manage the flow of traffic. And in this case, the critical internal locations where staff would be located include the pay stations at the exit of the car wash and at the intersection of the shore access drive of the east-west access road. Those are key points. And thirdly, manage and allow for the utilization of overflow stacking, which is shown in here in gold with the north shore access drive and direct traffic away from using the car wash in the unlikely event that it extends or stacks beyond what you see in there. Again, it's a total of 46 vehicles. Very, very unlikely that you would see that kind of queue, but they're prepared to accommodate that if needed and again, turn away people if it goes beyond that. That concludes my summary presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for him. You show 36 cars there, I believe.
Where are the other 10?
Yeah, where are the other 10?
Okay. I don't have a pointer, but when you count them, you have 36. Between the gates and the entrance to the tunnel, there's approximately five vehicles that could stack in there.
Okay.
And in the tunnel, typically, between four and five vehicles can be in the tunnel being washed at the same time. That's where the additional 10 vehicles are.
All right.
That's not really stacking.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I don't really see that as stacking.
Well, again, I said total stacking, like for example, when you go to a drive-through, you have the ordering board stacking and then you have the cars that can stack between the ordering window or the pickup window, I should say. Again, that's total stacking.
Okay. All right. One other question. The entrance off of Grand Avenue, would there be signage to direct them to the back north, east, west?
When you say the entrance to Grand Avenue, are you speaking about the right-in, right-out or?
Yeah, the right-in, right-out. When they come in there, is there going to be signage to direct them to the back street, the access drive?
Let me see if I understand. So if they turn right, you say to direct them to continue north?
Yeah, so is there going to be something to tell them to go north?
There could be signs to actually do that, to reduce the amount of traffic that goes in front of the Bonneville. So there, there could be signage. Again, signage can be provided to actually be circulated and provide that.
Okay, but is that planned?
So yeah, they will, they will, they will do the signage.
You showed arrows directing, you know, showing the flow of traffic. But you don't say how you're going to manage that.
Well, I believe you're asking about an area that's off-site of our property. You're talking about where they come in off of, off of Grand. I think we have the right to put any signage related to the car wash up over there unless we discuss that with, with the developer. I mean, the, the pattern of the traffic will be the pattern of the traffic.
And I, I think you could accomplish it with like a sandwich board sign basically at the, the, near the exit of your facility, you know, directing them north along the west side of your facility, something along those lines.
Well, and I guess I just want to clarify, are you talking about at the times when it's really significantly busy?
Yeah, I was just, well, I mean, your stacking's all coming in from the east-west access road to the north. And if they come in from across Bonneville's parking lot, they're coming in the wrong direction. I guess they can turn there and go, go north still. So I didn't know if there was some way to keep them from using.
Well, I think as, as Mr. Ziegler identified, at the times where it's really busy, they're going to have people out there and certainly if there's a recommendation that we have signage available to do that. I just want to make sure it's 10 or 12, possibly 10 or 12 days a year for a couple of hours. So, but certainly, and that's a concern and that's why we had added to is to talk about that, we can't address it at that time. But as permanent sign, there wouldn't be anything there.
I think just along those lines, there will not be, right, because of the cross easement, there will not be at the, the east end of the Bonneville, there will not be a do not enter sign that stops traffic flow from Bonneville into the car wash, right? That will be free-flowing accident.
That's correct. It's intended to be a two-way cross-access drive.
One other that I had, so on the, I think it's the, maybe the last slide, the landscape plan, that one, yeah. So did anything change with the landscape plan for that's directly to, not along the, the side of the neighbors, but right outside of the car wash? There was a proposed, I think, four-foot berm there, four-foot berm and landscaping right in front of basically the pay area? Is that remains the same or did, did anything change there?
Well, first off, this slide was not presented the last time we came before you. There was no landscaping plan. This is our onsite landscaping plan, which meets requirements of, of village ordinances. And the addition, and the berm and the additional plantings that Tim is talking about is off-site. On, on our plan that we did present last time, there was a four-foot wall that was, that's in there in order to stop headlights coming through.
Yeah, that's what I'm referencing.
Right, well, that, the, the wall was there and the wall stayed there. Nothing changed with that. The landscape plan was not on the last, the last time we were, we were here, but we, we're just showing it to show that, again, we, we meet all the requirements, you know, for landscaping. Tim has indicated that in addition to our landscaping, talking about off-site landscaping north and on the berm that's to the north.
I get that part. So is, does the, the wall remain and is there landscaping on the wall or is it just a wall?
It's just a, it's a, it's a brick, is it brick or concrete, the wall? It's a brick wall, there's, there's no plantings on it, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Ted?
I was out at the site today and the lot just seems really small for what you're trying to put on there. And I, I still have concerns with, with the vehicular traffic and, and the flow of traffic, just from my personal experience of going to car washes when the snow melts and I want to knock the salt off my car. So I, I, I really, you know, you're, you're doing 30-some cars there, it looks like, or 40s, I think you said 46 or whatever. And but you only got 16 spots there also to, for vacuuming and stuff of that nature. So are we, is that going to cause a lot of traffic to go in and out? And then are we going to have trouble with people backing up into the, the whole facility? I, it just seems really too tight from, from my, my personal opinion for the, the facility there.
I mean, the, the, just so you know, and I think I indicated the last time we were here, we're looking at developing 10 to 12 car washes all across northern Illinois. The site plan that you see today is really, really typical of the site plan. So this, this site plan was not reduced because of the amount of land that's here. The amount of land is typical. The site plan that you see and the traffic flow onsite, very typical, very safe and is one that we've used over again. I'm not going to have, you know, Ms. Davidic from Dream Clean talk about that, but yeah, the flow and all of that, not an issue. This is how these car washes operate.
Dave?
Unfortunately, I didn't have the benefit of being able to attend the first meeting. One of the things that really hasn't been discussed operationally is either noise that is generated by the site. And I don't know if that's something that really is for purview again tonight, but you know, I see all the, you know, vacuum stations and I know during the heat of the summer, you know, I expect that the car wash should be busy, the entrance and exit points will be open, machines run, water noise, dryers, blowers, generate a certain amount of noise in the summer, prevailing winds are generally out of the south, southwest, helping move noise into the neighborhood or whatnot. So again, I don't know what necessarily can be done to mitigate those sounds that are going to happen, but I am curious what you have planned for your, your hours of operation or whatnot. Be respectful, I guess, of the fact that you're tucked up against the neighborhood in this particular case.
Certainly. At, at the first presentation and also at the board, we did identify the site plan that we presented, the configuration, putting the blowers, which is the most significant amount to the south. There was a relocation and the pumps that power all of that also to the south. We did have it, we had a sound study that was performed and then all the sounds that come here. We did have, we had a sound study that was performed, and then all the sounds that come here meet all the general requirements. The hours of operation are eight AM to eight PM. It was again, standard operation for the car washes. And that was addressed, I don't know if we brought, we don't know if we brought our, we had our southern engineer. I don't think we had him here last time, but at the village board, you know, in that issue, we've done everything we can to abate that, put it as far away as we can from the residences.
There was a sound study done and submitted to the village, and the conclusion of that sound study demonstrated with their models that they utilize that the blowers and the vacuums, that sound is projected south and southeasterly away from the residential properties, and that the underlying sound of the traffic of Grand Avenue exceeds the sounds that the car wash is going to generate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a quick question today for Dave. They're complying with all requirements for everything, right?
So the only thing that triggers the special use permit is the use of the car wash itself. They meet all of the landscaping, all of the architectural, all of the lighting standards that are built into the zoning code. Yes?
And Mr. Ziegler, in terms, we have other car washes. In terms of the stacking, how does it compare to the other?
For the other ones that have three pay terminals, it's very, very similar.
And the village hasn't had any complaints?
No complaints, yeah. Our code is five stacking spaces per pay station, so that would be fifteen spaces. They are currently showing that they can accommodate thirty-six upstream of the pay stations without affecting any other property.
Dave, are there any other car washes that are in shared environments?
Papo's is a single standalone. Tsunami is a standalone. The one behind, I don't know that I have, we have any others in town that share access points.
And that's my key concern. Typically, the right-in, right-out on Grand into the complex. You have the potential for a lot of busy activity at the south end there, where people are potentially trying to use the car wash or access the bank. And if there's just a lot happening in a very short span of pavement, you've got people trying to get into the car wash, you've got people trying to get into and out of the drying, the vacuum stations, and then you've got people exiting the tunnel. And then add that on to the people that might potentially be trying to access the proposed bank. I'm very concerned about the traffic. Well, I think that's one of the points that came up at the board, too. And I think that's why, one of the reasons the board remanded it was because there was discussion about this traffic study. And if you look at the traffic study, they're coming with some numbers in the morning, at least, and on the weekends that are less than, you know, if it, when the project was viewed not having a car wash.
Yeah, but our count is one thing. The physical activity of everything being clustered in a very small area is quite another thing. I mean, logically, it doesn't feel good to me.
All right, well, I'm just pointing out, because this came up at the board, and if you look at these numbers here, these are significant decreases in what, you know, the original plan for this, the greater site.
But that study was on what the streets around it can.
No, this is what's coming to the site.
Right. It was the in-and-outs site, based upon the original.
In-and-outs?
Re-permitted by right.
Oh, for the drives.
Yeah. I mean, ultimately, that's where you're going to count. You know, what's coming to the site.
Jim, I see your points. I mean, logically, so we're talking about just the volume of traffic that's exiting and entering the site itself, but this particular use tucked in next to Bona, which will have vehicular traffic trying to go through their drive-through system. There's definitely some pinch points on the south end, right? So I think when you look at this through the lens of, let's say, a user, someone who might come into the site, shortest distance is a straight line. Someone pulling in, doing a right-in there, is going to see the car wash, and I'm going to guess is probably going to cut through the south parking lot of Bona. The natural tendency is not to go straight and go all the way up to the access drive and cut back over to the east, then come back down south and exit and enter into the site. I think, you know, anecdotally, I think a lot of human nature will take people straight through Bona, and then when they exit, they'll exit through Bona, you know, and not go up the access lane that's in between the two sites to go north. So I think, and again, very, very peak times, I can see conflict through that stretch across the south end of the site.
And with other uses, I mean, with this particular use, everything in and out of that use funnels through the south end. If another use was there, there would probably be access points to get to the east-west road to the north. And with this, everything is coming through in one very narrow piece of real estate. I want to make sure, a point that you're talking about everyone getting to Grand Avenue and turning in there. There's an access point to the east where cars can come in. At the top right corner, you can see they can come in that way.
Right. Two-thirds of our customers are coming from the east.
We can let Javier address that, but we got, wait, wait. We'll let Javier address it, but you're expecting that cars are going to drive past an entryway to come in and come in at the center? I'd like to ask Javier to address what the general pattern will be based on this design.
So just to add a little bit to that, you know, based on numerous Institute of Transportation, you know, engineer studies as well, as well as our own studies and other consultants. Typically, when you have two access points or two ways of getting in, because we're thinking all of this is going to enter through the right-in, right-out, or at least that's what I'm hearing. Coming from the east, two-thirds to maybe up to three-quarters will take the first chance that they can to go in. And that's going to be that one that you see first going in. And I don't have a pointer, so, sorry, right over there. Yeah, correct. The other third or a quarter will take the right-in, right-out. Having said that, in those busy days, one of the good things about this is the openness of it. And what do I mean by that? As you're driving in Grand Avenue, you can actually see how busy that car wash is. And you can make a decision way ahead of getting there whether you're going to go in or not, because you might feel like that is too long, and I'm using, like you mentioned anecdotal and your experience. When I'm driving and I want to get my car washed, I'm driving, I'm trying to see what's the easy one to go in. If I see that line that is too long, I'm like, I'm not doing that.
So you're trying to tell me that people, that two-thirds of the people are then going to turn in off of, I forget the name of this.
The people that are coming from the east, they have two options of going in.
But your argument is, or your point is counterintuitive. You're saying that people want to see if the car wash is busy, but yet two-thirds are going to turn into the side street before they can even see if it's busy. That doesn't make any sense to me.
No.
So I don't want to get into a point, counterpoint thing here, but I'm.
I understand your point. I know I'm not going to be able to convince you. I'm trying to explain to you what the studies have shown, and.
Yeah, but you also said that people will make a decision based on what they see. I find it hard to believe that two-thirds of the people are going to turn before they can physically see whether the car wash is busy or not.
No.
So we'll just move on.
Okay.
All right. At this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would care to make a comment? And as a reminder, please address your comments to the planning and zoning board. Once we've heard.
I'm sorry, say that again.
As a reminder of procedure, please address all your comments or questions to the planning and zoning board. Once we've heard all the questions, I'll close the floor to the public, and we'll address the comments and questions the best that we can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak tonight. I appreciate you two gentlemen that were not present at the last hearing about this property.
Sir, can you state your name for the record, please?
That was well-received by myself and maybe my neighbors, but.
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, what?
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, okay, sure. My name's Tim Shepherd, and I'm a resident in the Bridlewood neighborhood. I think last time I addressed this board, I was a little bit concerned, or I may have started my speech by saying shame on you, because like we have mentioned here tonight, we are trying to put so much stuff, and I'll use the phrase, five pounds of stuff into a two-pound bag. We are overdeveloping this property with car washes and banks and Buena Beef, and we're talking about the traffic pattern. And the traffic pattern is an exit or an entrance from the right, from the east into the property, into Buena's Beef property, their parking lot. Now you want these people to use Buena Beef's parking lot or access to go into the parking lot. All right, do we have that clear in our mind? So there's no individual access for the car wash. And you say there's two accesses. So the first access is going to come into our neighborhood before you get to Buena Beef. So they're saying two, two accesses, yeah. Let's filter the traffic into the neighborhood, into the residential neighborhood, Woodlawn Drive, I believe it is. Am I correct on that, gentlemen, my neighbors? So now you're saying, you know, additional traffic is going to stream through our neighborhood or on this what we call a frontage road, a service road, which is so narrow, so narrow, that during the snowstorm, two cars could not pass because no one has taken ownership of plowing that street. So now we have made a situation that was bad to worse by no one taking accountability of that street. We haven't named it, we haven't put up, we haven't put up barriers, we haven't done anything to protect the people you are supposed to be looking out for. You put in this road, you stuffed all this stuff into there, and now these developers, they want to get as much revenue as you do on a piece of property that's being overdeveloped. And I wish to God you consider that as we move forward. There is no sidewalk, there's no green space. You jammed all this stuff in there. And I say with what I started with last week, shame on you for allowing this to happen. We have met with Tim, and I appreciate his support. He is doing things to try to accommodate the residents here in the neighborhood, and he has met with us on numerous occasions. And so I appreciate the effort that's going forward, although I thought the hindsight was poor, you know, as far as the board goes. We didn't do a good enough job working with the community, working with the residents. And so with that, you know, in these traffic studies that Javier, I'm sorry, is providing, can't say I believe them. I live there. I see the traffic that's using that frontage road, the service road. That's the main access right now going into Buena's Beef. And it will be the main access and exit as the car wash gets developed, as the bank gets developed, and the medical building that's going to get developed. I'm fortunate, my property backs up close to the pump house. Are you familiar with the property and the pump house? Yes. Okay, great. So I'm not impacted as much as some of my other neighbors here. So I just wish you all folks would consider some of the ramifications of developing this product or this property. Where the headlights are going to be, is there going to be, you know, a safety guard, a guard rail there to protect someone from sliding off the road that we don't even, we don't even remove the snow from, making a bad situation worse. But anyhow, so please take into consideration some of my comments, and I appreciate your time for listening. And with that, I'll turn it over to whoever wants to take the stand here.
Thank you.
Boy, I wish I was taking notes. There's a lot going on here tonight. My name is Scott Music. I live at 1-800-43-BANBURY DRIVE. My house backs up to that service road. Okay, start with a couple of things that I heard tonight. One is the traffic. The gentleman stated, people coming down Grand, they'll see if it's crowded or not. You get to, I believe it's Bridlewood, right there, the first one. You can't even see any of that lot until you get to Bridlewood, and then you have to make that turn into our subdivision. So you got a couple hundred feet, and then that's going to be where the car wash is at. So it's not like you're going to have a ton of time to see if it's crowded or not. You're going to be past Bridlewood already, and then you'll have the one entrance on Grand to get in. It comes up on you very fast. Now, when you do make that turn, you have the townhomes, a street coming, it would be west, that goes into Bridlewood. And then a little further up, then you go into the service road that they established. So right there is going to be a problem, because a lot of people use that as a cut-through that live in townhomes that go into the single-family homes. So when people are making that turn off of Grand very quickly, because it's quick, boom, that street is right there. So there's people blowing that stop sign all the time, too. Then you got people coming right on top of them. It's going to be an issue. That's one, and we have a lot of accidents on Grand Avenue, right past Bridlewood anyway, because there's a turn lane that, we use it because we know it's a turn lane, and it brings us into our subdivision. But a lot of people know that you can just keep going straight. Well, once you get past Bridlewood up by Buena Beef, that lane ends. So you always get people merging over. I'm not exaggerating when I say it's two, three accidents a week. I know because I live right there, I see the ambulance, I can hear the sirens. It happens all the time, and that's just going to get worse with that. There's no doubt in my mind. My question is, so this car wash, when it empties out, does it, is it going?
Sir, please address your questions to us.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
When it empties out, is it emptying out onto Grand? Or is it emptying out onto this service road? And then people are going to have to go east or west?
As I said before, once we've heard all the questions, we'll answer the question.
Okay. So that's my concern, because if it empties out onto that service road, people are going to be pouring up and down this service road. These folks have said, oh, it's only ten, twelve times a year. Let's face it, it's weekends, people get their car washes on weekends on their way home. Summer day, on a Friday night for the weekend, they're getting their cars washed. Well, guess what? That's when we're trying to be outside and barbecue and be with our families, and we're going to have a parade of cars going back and forth during peak hours, during the time of day that we're supposed to be enjoying ourselves. I hope that in the future here, when you guys continue to develop, that you take into account the people that you're ruining what we have established. Thirty years we've been there, and it's all gone because you had to put a road thirty feet behind our fence, thirty feet. I got a puppy this summer. I had it out last week. Two people walked off that service road, ten feet, ten steps to the back of my fence, and they're trying to get my dog, trying to touch my dog. This is what, we have no privacy, we have no security, it's all gone. Now, I appreciate what Tim's been doing, he's came out a couple of times. He's spending more time than he probably. more time than he probably has to with us, and I appreciate that. And we're trying to work with him the best we can. Our frustration is the same as it would be for you. Now, I know for a fact that this property would never jive behind any of your properties, it wouldn't even be considered. But us 10 folks that live there, it's like we just got crumpled up and thrown in the garbage. I've called before this all started, every time I call, I had a foot and a half of water in my backyard, my fence has been, it used to be this high, now it's about that high. Oh, it's just because, you know, we're going through everything, you know, they're going to fix it. I just want you to know our concerns, and I hope as you continue to develop through Gurnee, that you'll have a little bit more consideration for the people who you're affecting. I mean.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Question was, when people exit the tunnel, where, where they're going, and they're going into that access.
Right. They'll, right, they'll go to the, the east-west private road directly south of the access tunnel, or south of the car wash tunnel. They've indicated that there's a no right turn, so they're directing people back towards the vacuum stations and back up that drive aisle between the bank and the, the car wash. From that point, they can go up to the service road and either exit out to the east towards Bridlewood, or they can go west and go to the right in, right out, or they can go further west and go all the way out to Hutchins Road. One comment, it is a private street, it is a private service road. As such, it's incumbent upon the property owner to maintain the snow. It will not be a named street. Named streets are typically village streets, so it is, it is just a service road, so it does not have a, a naming associated with it. Along those lines, sidewalks are required along public streets. So there is, Bona built a portion of the sidewalk with their site development, the car wash will build their portion of their sidewalk when they develop, the bank as such, and then the medical office has at the same time when they develop. So there will be a continuous sidewalk from Bridlewood to Hutchins along the Grand Avenue frontage. That's our requirement, is pedestrian facilities along public streets. That will be the only place that there will be public sidewalks. And just a reiteration, the 10 to 12 times a year is when they expect the queue lanes that are fully contained within the pay stations, those first six queuing spots. The 10 to 12 times a year is when they expect it to exceed those typical queue lanes, and that's, those locations indicated by the gold bars on the, the site plan.
If not, appropriate to move to the motion phase? Anyone willing to advance a motion?
You going to read them all, all four?
Now, it's just a single motion, and then we had four possible conditions that would be based upon Mr. Hague's testimony.
Right, and since there's been testimony that those are acceptable, that should be part of the motion as conditions. And again, for, for purposes of voting, regardless of how you're going to vote, because the petition is asking affirmatively to vote for this, the motion should be framed affirmatively, and then, you know, understand that when you're voting on it.
So motion to recommend approval, to approve the petition and recommend the village board approve the special use permit for Dream Clean Car Wash on property located at 7340 Grand Avenue, subject to the following conditions. Number one, enhance the landscape to be consistent with developer's proposal. Number two, implement traffic calming measures, including additional striping and/or signage. Number three, add houseside shield to drive aisle and lights where needed. Number four, add graduate, guard rail along north side of drive aisle where deemed appropriate by staff.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Need a, need discussion? Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Nay.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Nay.
Pfaff?
Nay.
Martin?
Nay.
Ware?
Nay.
And Chairman Sula?
Nay.
Sula?
Didn't hear Ms. Ware's.
Nay.
I also vote nay. So the motion fails. As you know, we are recommending body to the village board. You choose, you can take it up with the village board. Got a date that staff can provide to you. All right. Next meeting on the calendar is scheduled for December 17th.
We do not have anything scheduled at this point, so most likely will be canceled.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the opportunity for public comment for things that were not on the agenda this evening. There being none, I'll close the floor to the public. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You got that, right? I'm good. You're doing well.